Well, you're all going quiet by yourselves. I don't even have to do this, but I will. Good evening. It's 7:00 or a bit after. There being a quorum present and having been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served, this annual town meeting of the town of Plimpton is now open. I'm your moderator, Barry DeCristofano, 198 Main Street. Thank you for coming, and I'll just go over it a little bit about how tonight's meeting will run. The two microphones are in the center, and I see this year there are slightly different heights, so there's the Alan Wheellock height, and then there's the height for the rest of us in town. And, you know, we're still in the COVID. It still exists. You don't have to wear masks, but if you do, you're certainly willing to. And if you're more comfortable with more space around you, feel free to move your chair to any place where there's a little more space. And I ask that you're considerate of your neighbors who maybe aren't quite as comfortable as maybe you are. At this moment, I'd ask everyone to please rise and observe a moment of silence for those Plimpton neighbors who have passed away since our last meeting. Thank you, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Principal Peter Veneto and all the custodial staff for setting up the room tonight. We'll be holding both our annual town meeting and a special town meeting tonight. The annual town meeting addresses the coming fiscal year, 2024, that starts on July 1st. Then at or about 8:00 PM, we'll recess the annual town meeting to begin a special town meeting to address funding issues in this year's spending. You should all have received a mailed copy of the town meeting warrant or picked one up when you checked in and had a chance to review it. Tonight's meeting is being taped for broadcast by Area 58 Community Access Media. Please silence your cell phones. Please take them out and check them. I know you know you turned them off or put them on vi, but please take a moment to check We were at a play last week, and not only did the guy's cellphone go off behind us, but instead of being chagrined and hiding it, he had a conversation with people. He got a lot of dirty looks. Present tonight on your right is our Board of Selectmen. John Traynor, Mark Russo, Chairperson Christine Joy, our Town Administrator Liz Dennehy, Town Council Greg Corbo, and Town Clerk Tricia Dederman. On your left are the Finance Committee, starting, well, she's not really on the Finance Committee, but she assists them, our Town Accountant Lisa Hart. She changed her position from tradition. And then we have Marilyn Brown, Chairperson Catherine Shepherd, Steve Lewis, and Michael Lemieux, the Finance Committee. You were checked in tonight for the meeting by our tellers Nancy Magnuson and Patricia Mustakaris. Tonight, if a standing vote count is needed, the counters will be Nancy Butler and Colleen Thompson. Our peace officers tonight are Lieutenant Dan Hoffman and Officer Nate Cristofori. Several of our officials are not residents of the town and, as such, need your permission to address the town meeting if they need to. I will entertain a motion that will allow the following individuals to participate tonight when and if appropriate. Town Administrator Elizabeth Dennehy, Town Council Greg Corbo, Town Treasurer/Collector Christine Kelly, Police Chief Matthew All, Assistant Assessor Wendy Jones, Library Director Michael Slosson, Lieutenant Principal Peter Veneto, and from the Silver Lake Regional School Superintendent Jill Prue and Director of Business Services Christine Healy. I'll entertain a motion to allow those people to speak. And a second? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Downhands opposed? Unanimous. Are there any people in the audience who are not registered voters in Plimpton? Okay, because if you are not, you need to sit in the front row. And since nobody behind the front row raised their hand, I'm going to take that as everybody in the front row is ought to be there. Procedure rules. Anyone wishing to speak needs to stand at the microphone. Please, no more than two people should be standing behind the speaker while awaiting their turn. After being recognized by me, state your name and your full street address, house number and street, before you begin your comments or questions to help us better get to know one another. Please direct all comments through me, the moderator. I'll direct your comments to the appropriate person. I don't want side discussions going on. Article sponsors will be allowed up to three minutes for the presentation. Speakers from the floor will be allowed up to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak a second time on the same article will need to wait until everyone that wants to speak gets a chance to do so their first time. And if you do speak a second time, you must be bringing something new to the discussion, not just rehashing what's already been said. If you're proposing any substantial amendments to a warrant article, not just a word here or there, that'll need to be submitted to the town clerk in writing. And finally, we come here as neighbors and friends, and we'll still be neighbors and friends when we leave tonight. So with civility and respect for all speakers, we can maintain our strong Plimpton community. Before we get into the motions tonight, I'm going to invite our representative Kathy Lenatra to come up and make a presentation. You have more than three minutes if you need it. Not much more.
Hello, everyone. My middle name is brevity, so not to worry here. But I am here to make a special presentation to one of our residents, John Williamson. If he could come up, please. I wanted to embarrass him at his last school committee meeting, but I was unable to attend, so I thought, what a better place to show you off than at your own town meeting. So as you know, John's given back so much to the community here, especially on the school committee. He's been on the school committee for, I believe, nine years, and eight of those he's served as chair. He has since stepped down, and he's done a remarkable job, so I'm honored to present my friend, John, with a citation from "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts." "The House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to John," I can never say your last name, "Wilkemson," correct? "In recognition of your nine years as a member of the Plimpton School Committee, having served its chair for eight years, the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors." And it's given today, the 17th day of May, 2023, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and your friend, State Representative Kathy Lenatra.
Thank you, Representative Lenatra, and thank you, John. On to Article 1, I believe are the traditional words. Article 1, "To hear reports of the town officers and act thereon, and to receive and act upon reports of any committees, and give authority or instructions, or take any other action relative thereto." Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Are there any reports from committees or boards? All those in favor of approving this article and moving on to Article 2, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed? Unanimous. Article 2, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements for FY 2024 as permitted by and in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53F, or take any other action relative thereto." Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 2, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Article 3, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Wage and Personnel Classification Plan effective July 1, 2023, and to pay as wages the following sums, or take any other action relative thereto." Now, the way I'm going to do this is not read out all these numbers. I'm going to take it a section at a time and read the positions. If anybody has a hold because they have a question or comment about that, then you can put a hold on it. But first, we need to have this article moved and seconded, I believe.
Mr. Moderator?
Take out the microphones for you.
Move it to the tall one. Does that work? Mr. Moderator, Alan Wheellock, 10 Center Street, Chairman of the Wage and Personnel Advisory Committee. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay, the article's been moved and seconded, and as I said, I will go down by position, and if anybody has a question or a comment about that, just yell out "hold," and then if there are no holds in a section, we'll vote the section one at a time. Highway Superintendent, Working Foreman, Motor Equipment Repairman, Equipment Operator, Truck Driver/Laborer. Hearing no holds, all in favor of voting the pay ranges for the Highway Department as printed in the warrant, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Not unanimous, but majority. Clerical Election Workers, Senior Clerk/Warden and Constable. No holds, all in favor of the section for clerical election workers? You're ahead of me. Downhands opposed? Unanimous. Elder Affairs, Director Elder Affairs, Senior Aid. No holds, all in favor of the elder affair rates, please raise your right hand. Downhand? Opposed? Unanimous. Library, Library Director, Senior Library Technician, Circulation Assistant. All in favor of the library amounts as printed, raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Police Officer, Special Police Officer, Police Matron. No holds, all in favor of the police officer rates, please raise your right hand. Downhand? Opposed? Unanimous. Professional, Land Use Coordinator, Assistant Assessor, Administrative Assessor, Health Agent, Conservation Agent. Hearing no hold, all in favor of the rates under the Professional section, raise your right hand. Downhand? Downhands, please. Opposed? Unanimous. Town Hall Support, Assistant Town Accountant, Assistant Town Clerk, Assistant Treasurer/Collector, Administrative Assistant, Senior Clerk and Clerk. No holds, all in favor of Town Hall Support wages, please raise your right hand. Downhand? Opposed? Unanimous. Town Labor, Senior Disposal Attendant, Disposal Attendant, Town Custodian, Laborer. No hold, all in favor of the town labor rates, raise your right hand. Downhand? Downhands, please. Opposed? Not unanimous, but majority. Veteran Affairs, Veteran Affairs Agent. No hold, all in favor, raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Fire Department, under the Firefighter/Power Medic section. Full-time Captain, Full-time Lieutenant, Full-time, Regular Part-Time Captain, Regular Part-Time Lieutenant, Regular Part-Time, Per diem Call Captain, Per diem Call Lieutenant, Per diem Call. No hold, let's go on to the next section since it's all under Fire Department. Firefighter EMT, Full-time Captain, Full-time Lieutenant, Full-time, Regular Part-Time Captain, Regular Part-Time Lieutenant, Regular Part-Time, Per diem Call Captain, Per diem Call Lieutenant, Per diem Call. No holds. First responder category, Per diem Call EMT, no firefighter certification. Per diem Call firefighter certification, no EMT. Per diem Call, no firefighter certification, no EMT. No hold. All in favor of all the Fire Department lines as wage lines as proposed in the warrant article, please raise your right hand. Downhands? All opposed? Not unanimous, but majority. Article 4, I'm going to start. We usually don't have time to go into this before the special, but I think we can do this, so I'm going to go to Article 4. "To see if the town will fix the compensation of elected officers and to see what sums of money the town will raise and appropriate, including appropriations from available funds or borrowed to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest for the ensuing year, or take any other action relative thereto." Do I have a motion?
I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Article's been moved and seconded. All right, so as we do this, those who have been here before, the veterans of this, it's going to be similar to what I just did. We're going to go through the budget section by section. We'll take a section at a time. I'll read each line item in that section. If anybody has a hold, call it out, and when I get to the end of that group, we'll discuss that hold, get that cleared up in one way or another, and then vote the section. I'll give you a section. It's a second. For the first section, Insurance Premiums, County Pension, Group Health, Medicare, Unemployment. No holds, all in favor of lines 10 through 30 of the budget as printed in the warrant under the recommended amounts, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? For the General Government, Agriculture Commission, Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent, Open Space, Web and IT Services, Council on Aging, COA Director Stipend, COA Support Staff, Finance Committee, Historical Commission, Moderator Salary, Planning Board, Recreation Committee. There was a hold on line 113, Web and IT Services. Whoever made that hold, would you please come to the mic and state your concern, after you state your name and address?
Hi, John Duffy, 392 Main Street. So I noticed this seems to be a new line item. It's, I'm just kind of wondering, just want, like an explanation of why it's suddenly there, and just a little explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Who would like to answer that question, please? The town administrator will answer that.
So the position has been built for quite some time. It's actually our current Conservation Agent, who has been serving us in this capacity. He has a technology background, and he has been performing routine website upgrades for us, as well as some different IT services. We just thought for transparency reasons and ease of processing payroll that we would call this line out separately as part of the budget process.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that we move to hold. Now we're voting on the section for the Turtle General Government, lines 100 through 145. All in favor of the recommended amounts, please raise your right hand. Stands? Downhands? Opposed? Assessors. Assessors' salaries, Assessor, Assistant Assessor, sorry, Assessors' Support Staff and Assessors' Expense. Hearing no holds, all in favor of the amounts recommended, lines 160 through 170, please raise your right hands. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Town Clerk's Office. Town Clerk's Salary, Certification/Compensation, Town Clerk's Support Staff, Town Clerk Expense, Election and Registration, Election Support Staff. Hearing no holds, all in favor of the recommended amounts for lines 180 through 197, Town Clerk's Office, please raise your right hand. You're ahead of me again. Downhands? Opposed? Next section, Accounting, Accountant/Tax and Treasurer's Office. Accountant/Auditor Contract, Accountant Support Staff, Accountant Expenses, Treasurer/Tax Collector Contract, Certification/Compensation, Treasurer Support Staff, Treasurer/Tax Collector Expenses. Hearing no holds, all in favor of the recommended amounts from lines 200 to 220, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Majority. And I know this seems really boring people, but it's really important. I mean, think about it. As citizens, we get to decide on every dollar of our tax money and how it gets spent. So we're getting there. Selectmen's Office. Selectmen Stipend, Selectmen Administrative Assistant, Selectmen Expenses, Town Administrator Contract, Town Administrator Expenses, Computer and Technology Maintenance, Memorial Day, Town Buildings, Building Supplies, Town Custodial Services, Custodial Emergency and Special Projects, Town Council, Town Reports, Utilities. Hearing no hold, all in favor of lines 230 through 270 as printed and recommended by the Finance Committee, please raise your right hands. Downhands? Opposed? Board of Health. Health Stipend, Health Support Staff, Health Expenses. No holds, all in favor of lines 280 through 285. Board of Health, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Unanimous. Public Works. Highway Superintendent, Public Works Administrative Assistant, Highway Parks, Ground Labor, General Highway, Equipment and Maintenance, Cemetery Department, Cemetery Labor, Snow and Ice, Transfer Station, Transfer Station Staff. There was a hold on line 303, Public Works Administrative Assistant. Please, whoever made that hold, come to the mic and tell us what it's about.
Rob Farlott, 93 Main Street. Put a hold on that. It was recommended at 5%. I'm looking to go for 8%.
Does anyone from the Finance Committee want to comment on why their recommended budget is what it is?
That was the amount that we had previously recommended. However, we would concur with the Highway Superintendent that it should be 8%.
So do I have a motion to change the recommended amount for line 303, Public Works Administrative Assistant, to a new number? And what is that new number?
8%.
I need to know the dollar amount, Rob.
It's $1,100, $19 a week for her current rate of pay.
So that's going to be $21,500?
Yes, sir.
So there's a motion to change line 303, the recommended amount, or the amount voted for that, to $21,500. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
So this first vote is just going to be on changing that amount. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All downhands opposed? Majority. Okay, thank you, Rob. Okay, that clears out the hold. Now we'll vote on the rest of that section, lines 300 to 338. All in favor as printed, recommended by the Finance Committee, raise your right hand. No? What, I do wrong? Well, that's part of the section we're voting now. That 303 is part of that section. We voted on the change of the amount from $20,400.
I think the amount was $19,427.
Mr. Moderator, I think that the amount should be $20,527.
And I'm coming out at $20,981.
I believe he said he wanted $1,100.
So $1,100 added to... Well, when, when the finance folks...
Originally, the rec, amount last year was $19,427. $19,427 times 8%.
It's $20,981.
$19,427 plus $1.8 is equal to $20,981. Does that sound right?
Does that work for you?
I believe so, yes. That works at 3%. Absolutely.
Okay, so we're going to redo this. The amended amount for line 303, there's been a new amount moved. May I hear a motion for the $20,981 first, please?
Second.
And second? I'm going to move, motion in a second, to change line 303, the recommended amount, to $20,981. All in favor of that amount, raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Majority. Now we'll vote on the rest of the section, line 300 to 338 as inclusive. All in favor, raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Protection of Personal Property. Animal Inspector, Animal Control Officer, Animal Control Expense, Tree Warden Salary, Tree Warden Expense. Hearing no holds, all in favor of lines 340 through 360 as recommended and printed by the Finance Committee, raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Building Department. Building Inspector, Department Administrative Assistant, Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Wiring Inspector, Zoning Enforcement, Department Expenses. Hearing no holds, all in favor of lines 400 through 425 as recommended and printed in the warrant, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Fire EMS Services. Fire Chief Contract Salary. Fire EMS Services. EMS Medical Supplies. Fire EMS Salaries. Fire EMS Equipment and Repair. Fire Building Utilities. Fire Vehicle Maintenance. There was a hold on line 510, Fire EMS Salaries. Mrs. Hart, will you speak to that?
Yes, Lisa Hart, 7 Marie Lane Drive. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $351,000, transfer from the ambulance fund, the sum of $229,000, and transfer from free cash, the sum of $145,000, for a total of $725,000.
What was the middle amount for the ambulance fund?
$25,000. I think it was, please, I'm sorry. Yeah, 10.
Okay, I'm going to read it first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any move that we make these changes? So there's a motion to, basically what we're doing is accounting for where this $725,000 for line 510 is coming from. And the motion is... to raise and appropriate $351,000 of it, dollars, transfer from the ambulance fund $229,000, and transfer from free cash the sum of $145,000. And that should total $725,000. I didn't do the math myself. Is there any discussion about how we're doing that? Okay. So I'm going to, we have a motion to take that line item from three different sources. Do I hear a second? All in favor of amending line 510, not the amount, but the funding sources, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Majority. It clears that hold. Now we'll vote on lines 500 through 520, Fire Department EMS Services. All in favor of the recommended amounts, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Majority. Police Services. Police Chief Contract Salary, Police Salaries, Police Department Clerical, DARE. Was that only Police Department Clerical? DARE. DARE is the hold. Police Services Expenses, Police Station Utilities, Motor Vehicles. Will someone who placed the hold on DARE, please come to the mic and explain your reasoning?
Evening, sir. Michael Gagnon, 33, Bolchester Street. I want clarification, if you would, on the DARE program, why it says the percentage change on fiscal year '23, negative 100%?
Who would like to address that? Chief or the board?
No, that's just a statement. That's just a math error.
I'm told it's just a math error.
There was a zero change.
There's zero change.
It wasn't funded last year. It was incorporated as part of the budget.
Okay, so it was incorporated, last year the $1,000 was incorporated as part of the budget. Town Administrator says it wasn't a separate line item. Now it's being broken out as a separate line item. Yes, sir?
Rob Montgomery, 9 Toby Lane. That was the same thing you told us in '22 as well. There was a line item on the budget. So it shouldn't have been on the budget for the '23 when we moved it, moved it to the budget release in '22?
The former chief did not elect to include it in the budget for fiscal '23. But we decided to include it for fiscal '24 so that we could track it.
But it's, you were removing?
Wait, wait, through, through me, please. What's, what's your problem that you still have?
But it was budgeted in '23.
It, it actually wasn't. We put it in italics to show that we had allocated $1,000 from within Police Department expenses towards the DARE program. But the former chief, in putting together the budget, did not elect to call it out as a separate line item, as had been done in prior years. For the preparation of this year's fiscal '24 budget, we thought it was best to reinstitute that budget line for tracking purposes.
Okay, my question said another way, is that DARE program for Plimpton's...
Yes. I'm told it is. I'm seeing heads being shaken by people who know. This was just, this money had been spent before, but it came out of another line item. It's being broken out now as a separate item.
Confirmation that negative 100% is not counted?
Yeah, that's just an XL. Funny. Okay, that removes the hold. Now we're voting on the entire section, Police Services, line 550 through 570. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Majority. Emergency Dispatch, line 590, Emergency Dispatch Services. No holds. All in favor of line 590 as printed and recommended, raise your right hands. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Veterans. Veterans Agent, Veterans Administration, Veterans Benefits. Hearing no holds. All in favor of line 600 through 610 as printed, please raise your right hands. Downhands? Opposed? Next section is Library. Library Director, Library Support Staff, Library Expenses. Uh, that's it. Hearing no holds. Lines 620 through 625, all in favor of the recommended amounts, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Majority. Local Schools. Elementary School Costs, Special Education, Vocational Education. Hearing no holds. All in favor of lines 700 through 710 as voted, as recommended by the Finance Committee and printed, please raise your right hands. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Regional Schools. Regional School Assessment, Debt and Interest Regional School. No holds. All in favor of lines 750 and 755 as printed, please raise your right hands. Downhands? Opposed? Thank you. All unanimous. Okay, to the last section. Reserve Fund. Interest Loan and Refunds. Principal and Interest. Denit Debt Exclusion. Police Station Debt. Okay, um, there's a hold on line 825, Mrs. Hart.
I move that the town vote to transfer from Capital Stabilization the sum of $156,75 for line 825, Police Station Debt.
Okay, so the, the motion is to take this money from Capital Stabilization instead of from Raise and Appropriate. So this, this requires two-thirds? Yes. So this will require two-thirds vote for this line item because we're taking it from Capital Stabilization. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, all, all in favor? Yes. I was going to roll it all into one. Do I, you think it's better to do it separately? Okay. So this will just be a majority vote on the motion to amend the source for line 825. It'll be from Capital Stabilization instead of from Raise and Appropriate. Anybody have a question about what I just didn't do right the first time? All in favor of the motion to change the funding source for line 825, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Okay, now we're going to vote on that line item with the amended amount, and this is a two-thirds vote, for line 825 to take from Capital Stabilization, $156,75. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, now we're going to vote on the other lines in that section, 800 through 820. This is just a simple majority. All in favor of the amounts as printed in your warrant, please raise your right hands. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations. We're done with Article Four. And I need some water. Okay. Onto Article Five. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to the sum of $38,000 to conduct financial audits for fiscal year 2024 or take any other action relative thereto. Do, my motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion, no hands. So all in favor of Article Five as moved, raise your right hands. Downhands? Opposed? Majority. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Police Department to enter into a lease/purchase agreement in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), for a period in excess of three years to lease and purchase and to fully equip a police patrol vehicle as part of the department's replacement schedule, and to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide the sum of $14,000 for the first-year payment of such an agreement, or take any other action thereto. Now because this is a motion to, uh, enter into a lease/purchase agreement, it's going to be a two-thirds vote required. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant by funding source of free cash.
Do I have a second? I heard a second, right? Motion's been made in second for Article Six and for the money to come from free cash. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article Six, please raise your right hands. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to the sum of $71,000 to cover the first-year salary and all applicable fringe benefits for a full-time police officer to serve as a full-time school resource, resource officer at Denit Elementary School, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $71,000 to cover the first-year salary and all applicable fringe benefits for a full-time police officer to serve as a full-time police officer at Denit Elementary School.
Second?
The motion's been made in second. And I just want to point out, what you're hearing in a lot of these motions, if you notice that the warrant reads "to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds." So in their motion, they are specifying the source of the funding. In this case, it's raise and appropriate. So that's what you're listening for. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article Seven, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Majority. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to accept and expend such sums of money allotted, or to be allotted, to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, or any other state roadway reimbursement programs for the fiscal year 2024, and borrow in anticipation of reimbursement such sums as may be available to the state share of the cost of work, said Chapter 90, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to move Article Eight as written in the town warrant.
I need a little more...
What's the amount? We need, we need a dollar total, Rob.
Uh, I don't have the form, I think.
So the, uh, the motion for the article is to, uh, expend the sum of 160, accept and expend the sum of $166,850.97. It's not an open blank check. Good try, Rob. As written, yes. It's been made and seconded. Um, any comments? Questions? Seeing none. All in favor of Article Eight, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $200,000 for road construction, resurfacing, and top coating, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to move Article Nine to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum from Capital Stabilization Fund, the sum of $200,000 for road construction and resurfacing and top coating, including the payment incidental or related thereto, or take any other actions relative thereto.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article Nine. This is a two-thirds vote because it's coming out of the Stabilization Fund. In favor? Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $90,000 to purchase and equip a Ventrac-type machine for the maintenance of town sidewalks and grass areas of the town's fields, parks, and grounds, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I make a movement to pass over Article...
There's been a motion to pass over Article Ten, and it's been seconded. Would anyone want to discuss that, or ask why, or explain it? Seeing no hands. All in favor of passing over Article Ten, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $49,417.25 to make annual lease payments as part of the lease purchase programs previously authorized, as shown below, or take any other action relative thereto. And these are for the townwide fiber optic build-out equipment of $22,000, and a highway department truck of $27,417.25. Do I have a... Do I have a second? I don't know, I can hear you, but I can't. I'm not hearing you through there. I heard the motion. Okay, so Article Eleven has been moved and seconded, and to find, use the funding source of free cash. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article Eleven, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Majority. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a reserve from, a reserve from the Community Preservation, estimated annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administration expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2024, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriations, from FY 2024, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $5,000. Reserves, from FY 2024, estimated revenues for historic resources reserve, $10,000. From FY 2024, estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $10,000. From FY 2024, estimated revenues for open space reserve, $10,000. From FY 2024, estimated revenues for budgeted reserve, $65,000, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article's been moved and seconded as printed in the warrant. Is there, are there any questions or discussions? Seeing, seeing no hands. Please raise your, uh, we'll vote on it now. All in favor of Article Twelve, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Unanimous. Everybody wants to get home tonight. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer $30,000 from the undesignated fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund for the acquisition of land for open space, including areas important to preserving groundwater, community wells, and aquifers, as well as land for recreational use and affordable housing, as those terms are defined in the Community Preservation Act, CPA, and specifically for costs likely to be incurred in connection with the transfer, donation, or acquisition of such land, including technical assistance and pre-acquisition costs, such as title search, appraisals, wetland delineation, survey, et cetera, with such sum to be expended by the Plimpton Open Space Committee consistent with the town's open space plan as described in the Plimpton Open Space Committee CPA Funding Application on file with the Town Clerk. Provided, however, that the Open Space Committee shall report to the Community Preservation Committee not less than every two months or sooner, as may be requested, and further that any funds remaining shall be returned to the Community Preservation Fund by vote of the Community... of the Plimpton Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
The article has been moved and seconded as printed in the warrant. Is there discussion or comment?
Linda Letty, 44 West Street. I'm just here on behalf of the Open Space Committee to thank the town for having voted the pre-acquisition fund since 2012. This will be the fifth request we've made, and over the last 11 years now, it's enabled the town to acquire key, usually, open space parcels, such as Gatos and Virchows Park, and Dupre, and so on, that are widely used by the town for recreation, and also to protect our water resources, and erosion controls, and flood controls, and other purposes that help us maintain a rural town that's stable, and has an environment that's going to be healthy. So I'll be glad to answer any other questions. Article covers all the services we give by getting this fund. We are out of money right now, though we need to start over again July 1st. Sometimes we don't spend the money for a year or two, sometimes it takes three, it depends what opportunities come up. But we need to have something that's available.
Thank you, Ms. Letty. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of Article 13, as printed in the warrant, please raise your right hands. Downhands. Opposed. Unanimous. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of the fiscal year 2024 real and personal property interim valuation of the town, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Ethan Stiles, 85 West Street, members of Plimpton Assessors. I move the article as printed in the warrant with the funding source of free cash.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Article 14's been moved and seconded with the funding source as free cash. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 14, please raise your right hands. Downhand. Opposed. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $8,000, for the purpose of real property data recollection, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,000 for the built property data.
Article 15's been moved and seconded with the funding source raised and appropriate. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 15, please raise your right hand. Downhands. Opposed. Article 16, solar pilot agreement with Upland Road Solar 1 LLC. To see if the town will vote to approve the solar pilot agreement with Upland Road Solar 1 LLC, 1814 Franklin Street, Suite 700, Oakland, California 94612, for a solar facility located on Plimpton Assessors Map 13, Lot 2-29D, pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 45th, as amended by Section 61 of Chapter 8 of the Acts of 2021, and to authorize the Town of Plimpton Board of Selectmen, the Town of Plimpton Board of Assessors, and the Town Administrator of the Town of Plimpton collectively, as the "authorized officer," to execute the said solar pilot agreement on behalf of the town, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 16 has been moved and seconded as printed in the warrant. Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 16, please raise your right hand. Downhands. Majority. All right, we're going to get Article 17 in here, because it's pretty much the same, and then we'll probably take a couple-minute break, because it's getting near 8 o'clock. Article 17, solar pilot agreement with Ring Road Solar LLC. To see if the town will vote to approve the solar pilot agreement with Ring Road Solar LLC, 230 Park Avenue, Suite 1560, New York, New York 10169, for a solar facility located on Plimpton Assessors Map 8, as Lot 1-1, 1-27, 1-27A, 2-25, and 2-29, pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 45th, as amended by Section 61 of Chapter 8 of the Acts of 2021, and to authorize Town of Plimpton Board of Selectmen, the Town of Plimpton Board of Assessors, and the Town Administrator of the Town of Plimpton collectively, as the "authorized officer," to execute the solar pilot agreement on behalf of the town, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over this article.
Do I have a... Article 17, there's been a motion to pass over, and it's been seconded. Is there any question or discussion about why we'd want to pass over this? Seeing no hands. Oh, yes.
Second.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes. The reason we're passing over is that the pilot agreement is not ripe for review and execution.
All in favor of passing over Article 17, please raise your right hands. Downhands. Opposed. Unanimous to pass over. Okay, it's getting near 8 o'clock, which is when we want to start our special, so let's take a couple-minute break, and we'll reconvene at 8 o'clock. Thank you. Actually, before we start the special town meeting, I've had a request to just ask everybody to stop for a moment, to think about and to thank all of the people in our town who volunteer, for all the boards, and all the committees, and all the functions that go on here, because it makes Plimpton what it is. So let's have a round of applause for all of Plimpton's volunteers. Thank you. They are well-appreciated people. All right, so now we're going to move into the special town meeting, and so as I said before, these are items that relate to this current fiscal year that we're still in for another six weeks. And usually, if you've read through these, usually what these articles are, are items to move monies from one line that we voted last May into another line, maybe one line wound up. At this point of the year, we can see that that line has more money than it's going to need. Another line looks a little short. So most of these items are just shuffling money in this year from one pocket to another. Article 1, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $150,000, to be added to the old townhouse roof replacement repairs article, as voted pursuant to Article 7, at the November 20, 2022 special town meeting, in order to complete the necessary work, including replacement of the roof of the old townhouse, insulation replacement, completion of related structural, required structural repairs, and finished work, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the May 18, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line 20 group insurance, the sum of $98,000, to the old townhouse roof replacement repairs article, as voted pursuant to Article 7, at the November 30, 2022 special town meeting, in order to complete the necessary work, including replacing the roof at the old townhouse, insulation replacement, completion of required structural repairs, and finished work, and anything incidental related thereto.
Motion's been made in seconded, and the motion for this article makes two changes from what you see written. The first is that the money's being transferred from Budget Line 20 group insurance from last year's meeting, and the amount has changed from $150,000 to $98,000. Do I hear any discussion, any questions? Seeing no hands. All in favor of the article as moved and seconded, please raise your right hands. Downhands. Opposed. Unanimous. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $55,000, to be added to the building, the town buildings and maintenance emergency article, as voted pursuant to the Article 4, at Town, I'm sorry, as voted pursuant to Article 4, at the June 17, 2020 special town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $55,000, to be added to the town buildings and maintenance emergency article, as voted pursuant to Article 4, at the June 17, 2020 special town meeting.
Article 2 has been moved and seconded, and the motion is to take, to transfer that money, the $55,000, from free cash. Any questions or comment? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 2, please raise your right hands. Downhands. Opposed. Unanimous. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $6,000, to the unemployment line, Budget Line 30, in the FY 2023 budget, as voted pursuant to Article 4, at the May 18, 2022 annual town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the May 18, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line 25 Medicare, the sum of $6,000, to the unemployment line, Budget Line 30, in the October 2023 budget, as voted pursuant to Article 4, at the May 18, 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Is Article 4 has been moved and seconded, and the changes being that, first, that, I'm sorry, Article 3, I thought that didn't sound right, that the funding source is going to come from the Line 25 Medicare from the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, $6,000. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor of Article 3, please raise your right hand. Downhands. Opposed. Unanimous. Now Article 4. I knew it was going to come eventually. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $10,000, to the OPEB account, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the May 18, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line 345, Animal Control Officer, the sum of $5,000, and from encumbered funds, Budget Line 345, Animal Control Officer, the sum of $5,000, to the old townhouse.
Okay. Article 4 has been moved and seconded with the following changes. That $10,000 is going to be taken from two different sources. $5,000 from Budget Line 345, at the May 18, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, and also Line 345, but from encumbered funds of that budget line, Animal Control Officer. Questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor of Article 4, please raise your right hands. Downhands. Opposed. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to repurpose the unexpended funds, unexpended balance of funds appropriated pursuant to Article 22, from the May 12, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, for the purpose of refurbishing and retrofitting of Engine 1, by making the funds available for the purpose of refurbishing and retrofitting any fire department vehicles, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Moderator, Steve Silver, 24 Polk's Farm Fire Chief.
Yes, sir.
That about five, as written.
Second.
Article 5 has been moved and seconded as written. Is there any discussion or questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nathan Sides, 68 Winnetoxon Road. Couple of questions through you, please. First of all, what's the balance that we're talking about here? If I remember correctly, the article was for $120,000 or so, which is a rather large amount of money to be issued as a blank check, and the article seems written very vague, so I was just wondering if there's any sort of mechanism in place for checks and balances, or some sort of guardrails for the spending of this money, if it's just truly a blank check to the party.
Okay, thank you. First, let's take the first part of that question. What is the balance in that line item?
As of April 7, that's the new number I have here, is $69,149.
So there's $69,149 and change left in that line item.
I believe it's a little bit lower right now. Is that what I'm...
I have the number.
Yeah.
Yeah, the current balance is $67,773.45.
Okay, so we're looking at $67,700 and change left, and the second part of the question is basically how are we going to use this money, and is it going to be seen as appropriately used, I think is the way to paraphrase your question? Never walk that far away from a microphone.
Well, yeah, I haven't met a microphone I don't like either. It's a trouble. I guess, and it's not, for the record, it's nothing against the fire department, I would be asking the same question if it was the department, or the police department, or the highway department. I just was curious if there was, if expenditure from this proposed town would have to come before the Finance Committee Board of Selectmen, or if it was just going to be solely at the discretion of the fire department.
Gotcha.
You know, again, a fair amount of money, just not really have any sort of oversight.
Yep, okay. Chief, you want to take that?
Steve Silver, again, 24 Polk's Farm Fire Chief, and I think I can answer your questions, Nate. Currently, well, a little bit of history of this article, it's several years old, original article, and I believe it was $108,000 that was appropriated and voted upon by the town to, for refurbishment program for Engine 1. The thought at that time, instead of replacing Engine 1 for the tune of about $800,000, we could do something for around $100,000. Of course, then COVID hit, and everything went on hold, and we always know that story. So the point is, at the moment, right now, we have completed two-thirds of the work on Engine 1, which included all the body work that needed to be done, a lot of mechanical work, tires, electrical, I won't bore you with the rest, but we still have the pump work, and a lot of the plumbing work still needs to be done. So the remaining balance at the moment of $67,000 is an accurate figure as of tonight, but that will be coming down even further as we complete this project. The point of this amendment to the article is to take off Engine 1 as the specific target for the remaining balance of funds, which will not be an astronomical amount, and be able to reappropriate that money to other vehicles that are also in need of some refurbishment. Basically, we say, they need a little bit of love. You know what knowing the wind is like with bodywork and so forth and so on. So I think it's a just and a prudent way to spend the balance, which I don't know what the number is, but it's certainly not going to be $67,000. That one, we're done. That will then be, Engine 1 will then be complete, and we'll have some money left over. And that money's, of course, through the normal warrant process, would be allocated as needed specifically to vehicles, and nothing else.
Thank you, Chief. Did I answer your question?
Someone asked that.
Are there any other questions or comments about this article? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 5 as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands. Opposed. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $4,850, for the purchase of a new copier scanner for the Inspection Services Department, including anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the May 18, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line 25 Medicare, the sum of $4,850, for the purpose of a new copier scanner for the Inspection Services Department, including anything incidental related.
Second.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded with the funding to come from the May 18, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line 25 Medicare. Any questions or comments? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 6 as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands. Downhands, opposed, majority. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $34,850 to cover the remaining cost of the purchase and installation of a new generator at the townhouse, including any additional work incidental or related thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $34,850, to cover the remaining cost of the purchase and installation of a new generator at the townhouse, including any additional work incidental or related thereto.
Second.
Article seven has been moved and seconded with the funding source to be free cash. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Rob Montgomery, 9 Toby Lane, how you doing? Just curious, question or clarification, says the remaining cost, was this an additional cost that went over? There's an excess in this $34,000?
The total cost was approximately $55,000. We're funding some of it from existing funds on hand since it was an emergency project, and then we wanted to approach this body for the remainder of the funds.
Perfect. Follow up?
Sure, sir.
The townhouse generator at the townhouse, just, what's, which is the townhouse? Town?
That's the town hall.
The town hall?
Yes.
I didn't know if it was the store or...
Right, no, that's the old townhouse, but yes, the townhouse is the town hall.
The town hall?
Yes.
Generator for the town hall?
Correct.
Which used to be the old school. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no hands, all in favor of article seven as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $4,186,000 to pay unpaid bills for the prior fiscal year or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting, budget line 25 Medicare, the sum $4,168 to pay unpaid bills for a, for a prior fiscal year.
Second.
Motion for article eight has been made and seconded, and it is to take the money from budget line 25 of the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting to pay unpaid bills for a prior fiscal year, so this is before the one we're in. And because it's for, going back before this year, this is going to require a nine-tenths vote. So anyone, comments or questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of article eight as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. That makes it easy, I don't have to count. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $3,200 to be added to the recruitment for management positions article as voted pursuant to article seven at the May 12th, 2021 special town meeting or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting, budget line 25 Medicare, the sum of $3,200 to be added to the recruitment for management positions article as voted pursuant to article seven at the May 12th, 2021 special town meeting.
Second.
Article nine has been moved and seconded with the funding source again being that budget line 25 Medicare from the 2022 annual town meeting. Any comments or questions? All in favor of article nine as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhand, opposed, majority. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $22,000 to the fire chief's salary line, budget line 500 in the FY 2023 budget as voted pursuant to article four at the May 18th, 2022 annual town, but annual town meeting for the purpose of a required payment of accrued unused vacation and sick time for the outgoing fire chief upon retirement or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $17,000 to be added to the fire chief's salary line, budget line 500 in the FY 2023 budget as voted pursuant to article four at the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting.
Second.
Article 10 has been moved and seconded with the change being that the sum, it goes from $22,000 down to $17,000, and that the funding source is free cash. Any comments or questions?
Hi, Michelle Yanez, 392 Main Street. I'm wondering about the sick leave. The sick leave, is that accrued as an eight-hour day or is it done in a different formula?
Thank you. Who would like to address that?
It's accrued by eight-hour days.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing no hands, all in favor of article 10 as moved and seconded, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $20,000 to the fire EMS salaries line, budget line 510 in the FY 2023 budget as voted pursuant to article four at the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting for the purpose of covering a deficit in that particular budget line or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $20,000 to be added to the fire EMS salary lines, budget line 510 in FY 2023 budget as voted pursuant to article four at the May 18th, 2022 annual...
Second.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded with the funding source being free cash. Any comments or questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of article 11 as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, a sum or sums of money to be used to supplement the special education budget line 705 as voted pursuant to article four at the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting or to fund any other deficits for the remainder of the fiscal year 2023 or to take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, John Wilhampson, 255 Main Street, Plimpton School Committee Chair. I move that the town vote to make the following transfers. Transfer from the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting, budget line 710 vocational education, the sum of $60,000 to the special education line, budget line 705, in the FY 2023 budget as voted pursuant to article four at the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting. And to transfer from the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting, budget line 700, elementary school costs, the sum of $100,000 to the special education line, budget line 705, in the FY 2023 budget as voted pursuant to article four at the May 18th, 2022 annual town meeting.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion for article 12 has been made and seconded, and so the printed warrant article is this set available funds and a sum or sums of money. So the motion is to, $60,000 is one of the sums, and is to come from the 2022 town meeting, line 710 vocational ed to go to the special education budget, and the other is $100,000 to come from line 700 elementary school costs from the 2022 annual town meeting. Is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
All of that said, what, simply what we're doing is we are making up for a deficit that showed up this year in special education, which you also saw in the budget we voted earlier under article four, and due to some work that we're able to do within the school budget, we're making up for it within the school budget, but we have to transfer from the other two lines into special education so it can be used for that purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Wilhampson. Any questions or comments on that clarification? Seeing no hands, all in favor of article 12, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. And that concludes our special town meeting for tonight. Way back when, we were in the middle of our annual town meeting, so let's return to that now. We got as far as article 17, so we'll resume with article 18. To see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to create a new special person, to create a new special purpose stabilization fund, to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which may be appropriated and expended for all of the purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement documents, a document prepared by the Substance Abuse Bureau of the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department, found at, and I'm going to give the URL, HTTPS://www.mass.gov/doc/massachusetts-abatement/terms/download, entitled "Abatement Strategies," and consistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying allowable uses of opioid legislation settlement funds, and further to accept the last paragraph of said Section 5B and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation, 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds received by the town effective for the fiscal year beginning on 1 July, July 1, 2023, and further to transfer from available funds a sum of money equal to that received or to be received by the town prior to the effective date of this vote from opioid litigation settlements resulting from the town's participation in the National Opioid Multidistrict Litigation into said opioid settlement stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto.
Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant and that the town transfers a sum of $13,793 from the opioid, opioid settlement account in the general fund for the purpose of funding the newly created opioid settlement special purpose stabilization fund.
Okay, so the motion for article, article 18 has been moved and seconded, and if I can just, you're clear on what we're talking about here. This vote will be to create a stabilization fund for the use only of the opioid settlement monies that we get in from the state, and that money can only be used for those things laid out in the state law regarding this opioid settlement deal. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of article 18 as moved and seconded, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, it's unanimous. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Article Eight, Special Districts, to delete Section 300-8.3, Groundwater Protection Districts, GPD, in its entirety and replace it with the following, and I will not read the entire six pages unless everyone in this room wants me to, it'll have to be a unanimous vote. Do I have a motion?
I think it needs to be moved first, and then that report comes.
Anne Sobles, 55 Main Street, for the planning board to move the article as printed.
Second.
Articles have been moved and seconded, now I would like to have a report from the planning board, please. And I could be wrong about that order, that's just how I have it in my head, Ian.
Correct. So the Plimpton Planning Board held a duly advertised public hearing on this warrant article on May 9, 2023. Presentations were made, we'll summarize in a minute, but the conclusion of the public hearing on this warrant, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend supporting the article back to the court. What this article is, it is an update of the existing groundwater protection overlay district as it's set for in bylaw. Much of it is the same as is currently in bylaw. The original groundwater protection overlay district, bylaw was given back in the early 90s. It was a recommendation from DDP that municipalities have groundwater protection overlay district to protect groundwater, particularly in towns like ours where everyone is on well, to ensure that the groundwater doesn't become contaminated. Since adoption of our bylaw, a number of years have passed, the DDP came out with some additional values. That values was last issued in 2011, so what this does is it incorporates 2011 information into what we had in 1991. It did not necessarily bring it up to 2023, but it is a significant improvement overall of the framework.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? So because this is a bylaw change, we'll need a two-thirds vote for this. All in favor of article 19 as moved and printed in the warrant and as so well explained, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, two-thirds vote passes. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Article 11, definitions, to add the following definitions to Section 300-11.1, by inserting each new definition alphabetically into its appropriate place in the existing list of definitions. I won't read the definitions, but I will read the terms that are being defined. Aquifer, CMR, commercial fertilizer, discharge, impervious surface, surface, industrial processed liquids, historical high groundwater table elevation, impervious, mass depth, NGL, petroleum product. Do I have a motion?
Anne Sobles, 55 Main Street, for the article.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded as printed, we need a planning board report, please.
The Plimpton Planning Board held a duly advertised public hearing on this warrant article on May 9, 2023 at the conclusion of the hearing, and voted unanimously to recommend support of this. These particular definitions, some of them are definitions that were added to DDP's 2011 guidance, and some of them were things that actually didn't have definition in our original bylaw where it would be used for it to have a definition. So this is just sort of filling in the gaps where we didn't have definitions so that everyone who reads bylaw can understand it and it is clear to...
Thank you. Any other, any comments or questions about this? Again, because it's a bylaw revision, we'll need a two-thirds vote. All in favor of article 20 as moved and seconded, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $8,000 for the purchase of new personal protective equipment, PPE, to replace aging PPE or take any other action relative thereto.
Cheryl Davis, 34 Maple Street. I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded with the funding source of free cash, is there any, are there any comments or questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of article 21 as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $5,000 for the purchase, repair, and/or replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus, a CBA, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article 22's been moved and seconded with the funding source of free cash, any comments or questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of article 22, please raise your right... Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 22, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $30,000 to replace the frame on Engine 2, including all work incidental or related thereto or to take any action, other action relative thereto.
I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article has been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash. Any comments or questions? Think about it now. All in favor, please raise your left hands. Come on, I gotta keep you awake if I gotta be awake. Downhands, opposed, majority. Okay. Article 24. Right, yeah. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $5,100 for the purchase and install replacement tires, for the purchase and install replacement tires for Engine 2 or to take any other action relative thereto.
I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article's been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash. Comments or questions? All in favor, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $9,000 to be added to the General Consultant and Preliminary Design Services article as voted pursuant to Article 26 at the May 12, 2021 annual town meeting or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, John Mulhumbson, 255 Main Street, Chair of the Town Properties Committee. Move the article as printed in the warrant. Funding source of free cash.
Article 25's been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash. Comments or questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 25, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $298,000 for the replacement and/or repair of the roof on the front portion of the townhouse, including all architectural design, hazardous materials sampling and mitigation, and all necessary work and improvements related thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of capital stabilization fund.
Article 26 has been moved as printed with a funding source of capital stabilization fund because this is going to come out of capital stabilization. If it's approved, we need a two-thirds vote for it. All in favor, or comments or questions? All in favor of Article 26, please raise your right hands. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $16,500 for the interior building improvements and flooring projects at the Plimpton Public Library and anything incidental or related thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article's been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash. Any discussion, comments, questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 27 as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Well, I should have put it in for a big raise the way everybody's voting stuff tonight. Article 28. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $8,000 to cover the purchase and installation of fire and burglar alarm systems at the Highway Barn, including any equipment and/or services related thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
Moderator, the article is printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article 28 has been moved as printed with the funding source of free cash. Comments or questions or discussion? All in favor, seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 28, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, majority. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $15,000 to be added to the Information Technology and Equipment article as voted pursuant to Article 30 at the May 18, 2022 annual town meeting for the purchase and installation of information technology equipment, including upgrading outdated security software and hardware and equipment and programs necessary to enable video and audio recording and transmission of public meetings held at the townhouse, including anything incidental or related thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
The moderator, move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article has been moved and seconded with, once again, the funding source of free cash. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 29, please raise your right hands. Article 30. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $25,000 for Phase 1 of replacement of the children's nonfiction book collection at the Plimpton Public Library or take any other action relative thereto.
The moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article 30's been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash. Questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of Article 30 as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, majority. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $25,000 for infrastructure improvements and program maintenance projects at the town's recreational fields and facilities or take any other action relative thereto.
Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article's been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash. Comments, questions, discussions?
I'm R.F. Scott Devenshire, 122 Brook Street. I would suggest that the funds that have been proposed are going to be insufficient for the work that needs to be done and should be increased. At least $50,000. The state of our recreational fields and facilities is such that a significant amount of work needs to be done. $25,000 a year may be what we need to maintain the fields, but to make the safety and the infrastructure improvements is not going to be adequate.
Are you making a motion to increase it to a specific sum?
I would make a motion to increase it to 50,000.
Oh, you can't increase numbers on the floor, only decrease? Yeah, yeah. We can only decrease numbers on the floor, and certainly that, any change that huge is beyond the bounds of the article. So as moderator, I get to set what's called the bounds, and doubling the amount of money in an article is like really changing the article beyond just like what it was intended to do. So I can't allow a doubling of that amount. And it can't be raised at all, is that correct? Right. Yeah, but within bounds, right.
But what is the acceptable amount to be raised?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve, I wouldn't say it's within bounds if it were any more than 10%.
Then I would move that it be raised 10% in order to continue to improve the fields and recreational facilities.
So there's a motion to change the amount of Article 31 from $25,000 to $27,500. Is there a second for that? Okay. The motion was made and seconded to increase the amount from $25,000 to $27,500. Is there any discussion on this? Yes, ma'am.
Carolyn DeCristiano, 198 Main Street. Mr. Moderator. Is there anybody from the Recreation Committee who can speak to this? Or is there anybody, Finance Committee, who can whisper in on that request for money?
Thank you. First of all, is there anybody from Rec Committee here who can talk to this?
I'm Mark Riley, 12 Beckaway, on the Rec Commission. So these funds are necessary because the Dennett Soccer Field is almost to the point of unusable status. The Harry Jason Park needs to be updated, make it useful, so we can rest Dennett, recondition the fields. We can use them purely for game time and be practicing the Harry Jason. Harry Jason needs some infrastructure improvements as well. So that's the, that's the major amount of the infrastructure is right there. And the maintenance, if we're going to do this work, we need to maintain the work that we do. Those basic landscape maintenance that we've pretty much neglected over the past few years.
Thank you. And then the question was also, is there any comment from the Finance Committee about how the, this amount was gone to?
We were requested, $25,000 was the amount requested. And I think the Finance Committee would like to stick to that number. And we are very happy to see the Recreation Department, our Recreation Committee, very active, and I'm sure it will be in years to come and will be supported. But I encourage you to stick to $25,000 as requested, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would also just like to say that we all recognize that the Recreation Fields need work and they haven't been, Recreation Department hasn't been really active. Oh, they did get a $25,000 earmark. It's been being used to do some of this work. We've also increased their budget this year from $2,000 to over $10,000 for the Rec Committee. And then the $25,000. I mean, these numbers are, this budget's a complex thing. We worked hard to get these numbers. We didn't just throw that article on. That article was discussed with the Recreation Commission, and it was, you know, that was what was decided to put on the town meeting's floor. I think trying to change it, even though it's coming from a good place in your heart, is not the right move financially.
Any other questions or comments about this? Okay, so first what we need to do is to vote the change in amount of Article 31. The motion that was made and seconded was to change it from $25,000 to $27,500. All in favor of that change, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. Oh, one more time, please, all in favor? Downhands, opposed. Majority carries the motion to change the amount from $25,000 to $27,500. Now, from the main article, Article 31 with a new amount of $27,005, is there any discussion or comments? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of Article 35 as amended with a new funding amount of $27,500 and the source of free cash, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. It passes, majority. Article 32. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $30,000 for flooring replacement projects in three classrooms at Dennett Elementary School and anything incidental or related thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, John Mulhumbson, 255 Main Street, School Committee Chair. I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of capital stabilization.
Article 32's been moved and seconded with a funding source of capital stabilization. If this were to pass, it's going to need a two-thirds vote because it's coming from a stabilization fund. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Moderator, this is a continued program that we are doing here in order to deal with classroom floors. Of course, have the low bidder to do the school, and tiles, whatever reason, every winter seem to pop up, and they then come back down again, pick down in the spring, and that, you had enough times and they don't do it anymore. So if you recall, last year we did four floors and four classrooms. This is three this year. We'll be back, or I won't be back. We'll be back to do more, I'm sure, in the coming years in order to sort of rotate through the school and put in floors that will last a lot longer.
Thank you, John. Any comments or questions further? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 33 as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. I'm sorry, 32. Please raise your right hands. We're going to do it again because it's got to be a two-thirds. Downhands, opposed, unanimous, thank you. Article 33. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $5,000 for bylaw codification or take any other action relative thereto. Does somebody want to move that? You sure you're going to move that, or you're going to let Alan do it, or?
Mr. Moderator, Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street. I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Thank you. Article 33 has been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 33 as moved, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed, unanimous. Article 34. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $36,725 for the replacement of an HVAC rooftop unit at the Silver Lake Regional High School and anything incidental or related thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Jason Frazier, 66 Maple Street, Silver Lake Regional School Committee member. I move to pass over the article.
There's been a motion and a second to pass over Article 34. Are there any comments or discussions, or, yes, sir?
I'd like to thank the town for approaching Plymouth County for ARPA funds to cover Plimpton's portion of this project.
That's great. Any other comments or discussion?
Hi, John Duffy, 392 Main Street. I'm just curious why this is being passed over, that's all.
Thank you. Would you please answer that?
The Silver Lake Regional School Committee is satisfied with the town of Plimpton's action to fund this through ARPA funds instead of through a town article. So the project is being funded by the town of Plimpton. And again, thank you for that.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Duffy? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 34 being passed over, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, it's unanimous, pass over. Article 35. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $15,000 to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Jason Frazier, 66 Maple Street, member of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School or take any other action relative thereto.
Article 35 has been moved and seconded with the funding source being raised and appropriate. Any questions or comments? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 35 as moved, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed, majority. Well, let's take a break. Just kidding. Article 36. To see if the town will vote, well, see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken pursuant to Article 2 at the November 30, 2022 special town meeting, which enacted a new general bylaw, tax title payment plans. To amend the bylaws set forth with additions shown in bold and deletions shown in strike-through. and deletions shown in strike-through, or take any other action relative thereto. So rather than read those five paragraphs, you can see that they're adding things that are in bold letters and deleting things that they have struck through. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that article as printed in the warrant.
Article 36 has been moved in second. I'll give you all just a second or a minute to read that so you can really see what these changes are that are being proposed. If in the meantime anybody has questions or comments, please come to the mic.
Yeah, Murphy, 9 Dukes Brook Road. Just wondering if we're worried about the duplication of the language in Section 2. Looks like we're adding duplicative, but only if the taxpayer, dot, dot, dot.
Would someone like to discuss that?
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it does look like there was a typographical error in the warrant. Under Section 2, it indicates that the words "but only if the taxpayer" are being added, but those are duplicative. So, I don't know, through friendly amendment of the motion, those words should be.
So the bold, that's a good catch. The bold lettering, "but only if the taxpayer", that should also be struck through because those words already exist prior to striking out complies. So let me read Section 2 of this as it should read under what's called a friendly amendment. "The payment agreement shall include a waiver of 25% of the interest that has accrued in the tax title account, but only if the taxpayer pays off the delinquency according to the terms of the agreement. No taxes or collection costs may be waived, end."
Mr. Moderator, I move that formally as an amendment.
Okay, so the motion to strike the words the second time through of "but only if the taxpayer" has been moved in second. Any discussion about striking those words because they're duplicative? All right, seeing no hands. First, we're going to vote just on striking out that extra set of words, "but only if the taxpayer". All in favor of that, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Unanimous. Any further discussion on the article as a whole? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 36 as printed with the amendment we just voted, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed? That brings us to everybody's favorite town meeting article, the last one. Article 37. To see if the town will vote to adjourn this annual town meeting until 8:00 a.m. on May 20, 2023 in the Plimpton Townhouse for the sole purpose of conducting the annual town election, and further that this annual town meeting warrant will be dissolved immediately upon the closing of the polls on that date. The polls will be open at 8:00 a.m. and shall be continuously open for voting until 6:00 p.m. to bring in their ballots for the following town officers. One selectman for three years. One board of assessor member for three years. One board of health member for three years. Two constables for three years. Two finance committee members for three years. One finance committee member for one year. Two library trustees for three years. Two library trustees for two years. One library trustee for one year. One planning board member for five years. Two Plimpton School Committee members for three years. Do I have a motion in a second? Article 37 has been moved in second it as printed in the warrant and just read by me. Any comments or questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 37, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you all so much for getting our work done tonight.